So, no quorum?
So, it's, I guess, the question as to whether you wanna continue.
Well, I think that these people are here, I think-
Do you need it tonight, or if you wanna re-advertise it for two weeks from now, and do it two weeks from now?
I think we, we, I'm sorry, but we do need a quorum to, to close the-
Right.
The, the, the comment portion, but as we did last month, we've got people here that I'm sure have some comment about the town policy, the proposed policy-
Right.
Or changed the policy, so to speak. Um, why can we not hear those comments at this time?
No, we can put 'em on record, and then we'll go ahead and, you know, hopefully get everybody the next time around. But I definitely would not want to just say, "Let's just call it quits," and not have everybody come out here and give their input. So, I'm really in favor of going ahead and having a meeting otherwise. Everybody else feel comfortable with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Not quite, but I'm ready to go ahead, yeah.
So, we can go ahead and make it a quorum.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, everything will go, um, they'll take comments on all the items on the table.
They just can't take action.
Right.
Just can't take action.
All right, well, it's ten after six, or almost quarter after six, so let's call the meetings order. My name is A.J. McNevich, I'm the president of the Planning Board, representing Lower Rock Creek.
Tom Rehm, representing Ball.
John Spath, representing Phillipsburg.
And the Ball Planner.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance on this. I do thank you all for attending, we definitely do value your input. And I was just talking to Dennis there, down at the feeding poller, and he and I were having a discussion about, you know, meetings in both the Rotary Club and the Commerce Committee people and everybody, and the input that we need to have, especially in Phillipsburg. Because, um, just like everything else, I think all of a sudden something could happen, and everybody's not prepared for it. If we're somewhat prepared for it, we can look ahead and plan for the future to be guidelines that the people are happy with and satisfied with. Not somebody just coming in and going ahead and saying, "There's no rules and regulations, so we're just gonna go ahead and do whatever we want." Okay, so, with that comment, we'll go ahead and go about the growth policy in Phillipsburg. Linda, how are we doing with that? I saw we had the amended copy, and we went over the numbers from last month.
Yeah, I mean, they essentially have the amended copy. The comments we've heard have essentially been to send it forward as it is currently written to the Town Council. It's just been, um, we've had a hard time getting it to a quorum of the board to get it there. But, and it's one of those things that can't go forward just with that.
Right.
You know, it has to actually be voted on by the planning board.
But the issues that were brought forward last month will be mentioned in a letter forward to you.
Yeah, they'll get copies of all the minutes.
Mm-hmm, okay, good. All right. And again, I apologize for us not having a quorum, but if anybody does have anything else they wanna add, or they didn't remember to suggest or talk about last meeting, we definitely would value your input, and we will go ahead and have Linda make notes of it. If there's any changes that need to be done, we'll do it the next time with a quorum. Please stand, or just please let me know your name and where you're from.
My name is Ken Byrd, and I just have a question. How closely do you coordinate with the Town Council when you're coming up with your plan for Phillipsburg?
You know, that's a separate entity, Linda.
Um, well, actually, this plan was developed by the Town Council, and then submitted to go through the pol- through the growth policy procedure, and this is part of that process, is you have to go through the, through the planning board, and then it'll go back to the Town Council. So, the Town Council's really familiar with what's in there, 'cause they actually wrote it. And I, you know, I mean, last month, we heard testimony from the Town Council that they actually had had meetings to try to get in on it.
Is it possible for you to have joint meetings?
Um, the attorneys don't recommend it most of the time, but, yeah, I mean, technically it is, but they don't recommend it on stuff that we have to vote on, and then they have to subsequently vote on.
It seems to me that if there could be a, a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Town Council, considering the issues that are facing Phillipsburg, which I think are fairly well identified in what I've read. Number one, I think it would get a bigger turnout. Number two, I think then we have, even if it's an informal meeting, to satisfy the attorneys on terms of liability or something like that, but have a better discussion that coordinates between the Town Council and their responsibilities, and you guys, and your responsibilities.
Well, we could possibly go ahead and have Linda check with the county attorney, and also the commissioners, and see how they feel about it, because we're under their guise, we're just a volunteer committee, so we have no real power.
Yeah, it's a volunteer committee, so-
But we can just forward a suggestion to them, and if they do wanna go ahead and approve that, I mean, I don't think that anybody on the Planning Board Committee would have a problem having a joint meeting. The only thing is, again, we wouldn't be able to vote on anything or approve anything, but we take more of those suggestions.
I understand that.
And then the next meeting-
That it brings the discussion together.
Yep.
And if I understand, and things that I have heard are true, um, almost across the street from here, some people bought a lot and demolished a trailer in a garage. They had planned on doing five rental units, whatever that was, whatever that means. Then they found out that there wasn't enough water, and that they could only do two. I understand that Phil McDonald's submission to do thirty-four, um, homes up south, in southeast Phillipsburg, was put on some sort of temporary hold, again, because we don't have the capacity to deliver water. Um, so we're facing some significant issues in this town, and at this time that the town is reaching a level of popularity where young people wanna move here, and young people wanna start businesses here, and we have businesses who could benefit from having young people in the community, and we're unable to deliver services, and we're shooting ourselves in the foot as a result. And so I think we need to make this as high priority an issue as we can, and I think by combining your efforts and your knowledge and your thoughts with the Town Council's efforts, knowledge, and thoughts, might be one way to stimulate movement, rather than going back and forth between the two.
Sure.
And that's no disrespect to either one, it's just that, um, we're faced with now with a combination of opportunities and perhaps unsurmountable problems. And for the people who live here, um, we'd like to see the problems become surmountable and take advantage of the opportunities that are presented to this community.
Right.
Well, the issue is sewer and water.
Sure.
I mean, and there's nothing the Planning Board can do about the sewer and water. I think Phil McDonald's was held up because of the sewer lagoons, is kind of what I heard. From what I understand, Steve was involved in, at the meetings, I think they had plenty of water, wasn't that, wasn't it the sewer lagoons, and why they're held up?
It, it, it's the, uh, it's the volume of affluent that's going into the sewer lagoon presently. The sewer gloo- lagoons are out of compliance, uh, for the size, and that has to be corrected before you can put in much development.
Oh, Carl knows, too, he's on the floor now. No, going back to the-
Please state your name, too, for the-
Carl Suncham, Phillipsburg.
Steve Newman, too, you know, the A.J.
Well, Linda doesn't know you.
That's, yeah, she doesn't.
Going back to Ken's statement, there is validity in that, because I think, number one, uh, the developers presented to you, the developers presented to the town. When they presented it to the town, there was probably seventy-five people there. I think that you had very sparse attendance when they came in and presented. And so I think that, uh, joinness sometimes creates more participation, which hopefully increases effectiveness of people's comments.
Right. Okay, Tom, anything else?
I was gonna, I was gonna make a comment about the participation, I mean, much like the, the Planning Board and the relationship with the commissioners, who we talk to and send many more recommendations to. We talk to the city, uh, once a year, twice a year, um, this time a couple times during the year. But the commission, we send something forward to them almost monthly, um, much in the same way. We hear these comments, um, we've got lots of responsibility and no authority. So, those are, that's the body that we tell people to put their, their final best points forward down, down in that office, and I think the, the case would be much the same down the street. And frankly, uh, while this is, is, for an issue like this, I agree, it's poorly attended. However, it's better attended than many other meetings. There are probably more people here than were for Mr. McDonald's subdivision. Yet Mr. McDonald's subdivision is a very hot topic on the main thoroughfare.
Well, as, uh, as you know, Tom, I was on the hospital board for six years.
Yeah, I know that.
Um, I'm used to being in public meetings with sparse attendance, and I'm used to being in meetings where people turn up when they're mad at you, and when everything is going fine, they don't show up. You know, I'm very, very, but I just think that some coordination and sharing the knowledge that you guys are gaining through your studies and your opinions, combined with, with the Town Council feels, and having that as, um, one discussion for the public, would edify both you guys, and the Town Council, and the public, and probably get better newspaper coverage.
Well, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Elena.
Elena Gagliano, Phillipsburg. I think there should be some clarification, if I'm wrong. There happens to be three jurisdictions, the two municipalities which are incorporated, and the county. And we talk about a growth policy, it's a vision of what each jurisdiction has in mind for their towns or the county. In the growth policy, there is co- um, coordination between the entities. As far as a joint meeting, those are the ones you go to. Um, you should have the discussion with your Town Council, and the people from Phillipsburg should be there. Same thing with Drummond. And then it's reported to the Planning Board. And then you have people who represent the different areas, and you have John, who represents the town, who should report back here. And nobody says you can't come here and give your opinions. Um, as far as it being sparsely attended, I think there's a confusion between your regular meetings, monthly, and that this is a public hearing regarding the growth policy. Um, so I think maybe that should be, um, but again, if you're talking about the county growth policy, that's one thing. But if you're talking about the two municipalities, that's a different story. That's up to, you know, the people in each jurisdiction to come up with something. And then once you have everything updated in this, that's when you have a coordination meeting with the other two entities, or just the county, if there's a problem with the water, or whatever. Um, as far as the sewers or the ponds, I've been having a problem with that going back. Those things happen to be in the county, and the county has never been involved when there was a problem with the town sewage which goes into there. So, I just wanna bring that up as a point. I mean, those happen to be in the county, and, uh, just like the airport, that they wanted to expand, that was in the county. And then there's that thing about three miles outside of the town, that no man's land, that both the county and the town of Phillipsburg are supposed to be involved with. I'm not too familiar with that, but I've heard about that. I said my piece, thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Sure.
John, um, when I was here-
State your name, please.
Oh, Shirley Bev, sorry. Um, when we were here at the last meeting, I think you were, but I had asked about who had made the amendments, or who had done the crossing out and the rewording, um, and I understand that that was the City Council. And they did have people that could come in and speak to that. So, as far as, um, what the City Council has to say to us, or what we were supposed to already have said to the City Council, it's sitting right here in this, this is already done, isn't it? This is already what the City Council had suggested as far as what Phillipsburg wants for the growth policy, and that was already, if you were there, you already put some input from the people, if they chose to come and say something. And, and I'm trying to understand if that's the case, so that getting the two groups together at this point, when one of, um, for about Phillipsburg, that this is an already done deal, it's how we feel about it, and whether you take any more input, and whether you vote on, because this doesn't decide anything. All it gives us is the opportunity to make future changes, is that not correct? This doesn't put anything in place except to give us a vision of what we can do.
Right, the growth policy is not regulatory, it is just your vision of what you would like to see happen. And, and yeah, the town had, did make the changes. The town does have quite a lot in here. In fact, the first section, um, for about a page is about sewer and water, 'cause that's clearly the biggest issue. But yeah, the town made the, the changes, and usually the Planning Board does not get involved, um, in making changes for the towns. Um, they usually let the towns hold their meetings, bring forth changes, and then they just take it through the process to, um, get comments on it that way. Um, I, I did go ahead and re-advertise this with the display ad in the paper. So, this has been advertised literally for eight weeks now, so for two months. Um, I don't know how much more advertising we can do for, for this, this, uh, particular document. And it clearly states in there, um, that, you know, they are looking to zone and, and trying to point out the potential, um, issue that's, that people are going to want to talk about, so.
Um, Stephanie Byrd. So, in other words, the, this planning group, or, um, basically, you're just putting together everything that everybody else knows. And that's, and you're just putting it on paper.
For the-
Because you have no authority, you're not making any decisions.
Right, right.
You're not involved in any of the, the discussions, you're just recording what everybody gives you, is that right?
Where we, that's how it works with the towns. When it comes to getting outside of the county, the Planning Board then does hold a lot of the public hearings and collects the information and makes the changes and the recommendations to the, to the commission. But when it comes to the town, we only have one representative for the town on the board, so we usually let the towns recommend what they would like to see, and then, yeah, we just put it together, we put it into the document, take it through the process to officially adopt it.
So, so the town is part of the county, but the county does not interfere with any of the town's decisions, is that correct?
Well, I'm not gonna go that far.
Well, but, uh, I'm trying to understand, if the town makes the, the decisions, then-
The town, this is the town's thing, yeah, and the, essentially, the way this works usually is the county and the towns, both Drummond, the county, and the town of Phillipsburg will have to all adopt this, because we have one joint document. But Drummond and the county will wait to make sure they adopt it first, to make sure it's what they want, before they go ahead and adopt. So, they'll adopt after the fact to make one cohesive document, but, but yeah, they don't try to come in and say what they think the town's goals should be. They are pretty autonomous in that way.
And how do you communicate with the municipalities that are incorporated? Do you communicate just through the, the exchange of these notes with markups, and/or do you communicate, uh, one-on-one?
We usually send them the markup and the minutes, and, and letters saying what the recommendation from the Planning Board was. For the growth policy, that's usually the process.
But no one-on-one?
But no, no one-on-one. I mean, I've talked to them one-on-one, um, before the process to, and I made some recommendations personally before the process, saying, "Well, I think, you know, you need to word it this way," but yeah, I mean, when it comes to establishing their goals, yeah, we don't usually get, we don't usually input into what we think they're going to be.
I, you know, I just wanna, going back to the original growth policy, the growth policy was the county. And the county got involved in it, and they devised the original growth policy, and that's what it was. We mentioned the towns, we mentioned this, and all this other stuff, and that was it. They wanted to just get it out there and be done with it. Later on, that's when the towns came in and said, "Well, we want our own growth policy." Linda, the towns could do it themselves and have it separate if they wanted, but they decided they were gonna put it on here. And that's why it's all a joint document, like Linda said.
Yeah, on the original growth policy, the towns were not represented. And then in the two thousand twelve, um, revision, the towns each got their own little section. But yes, the towns could just say, "Oh, we don't want a joint document, we're gonna do our own," and completely do their own thing. And they'd still have to take it through the Planning Board and send, do this process, but they, but yeah, they wouldn't have any dealings with the county or Drummond at that point.
Why would they have to bring it through the Planning Board, the Planning Board has no authority?
Oh, because that's what state law says. State law says that you have to do a certain process.
Okay.
And that's one of the steps in the process.
Okay.
I think Phillips would, uh, hold it under the collar for this, if I'm not wrong, when that subdivision came in for McDonald's, was now when they had them all fired up to change their policies, Carl?
Our policies?
Yeah, to, to add stuff to the-
No, you just, that, this was done by T.L., that was going before you.
No, I mean, but the additions that you just put in.
Oh, we look, no, not primarily the subdivision, we're looking at the whole town, and like, you know, the vision. Today, being on, you know, on the council for only about seven months, there's two critical documents. One is the growth policy, the second is a capital improvement plan. So, when we have those in place, it is so much easier to get grants, 'cause you're reflecting back on something that was approved. And then, you know, because of these documents, we were able to convince the commissioners to give us some tilt money for the water line at a Frank Park. So, I think, you know, I don't know, tonight I see, you know, you, again, we can't vote on it, it's just that, uh, I don't know if there's a way to get the, you know, your members of the Planning Board to come. It's not a criticism, but again, it's a way, how do you get people to come, you know? You can watch Field of Dreams and use that analogy, but, you know, like Ken said, they'll come when there's a hot issue, but other than that, nah, they're not gonna attend. But I don't know, can you accept votes by proxy that, you know, if this gentleman, can he phone in or send in a letter saying, "I approve, you know, item's on the agenda"? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could, but-
This is not an ongoing problem, though.
Yes.
I'm sorry that you experienced too, this experienced too much in a row. I'm sorry to have experienced it myself, sitting here at the minority.
Oh, yeah.
But we don't have, we don't have one of those a year, and we've had two in two months.
Right.
I, I'm sorry, it just happened.
Well, I, I have just a general question, being a citizen of Granite County. Can the people of Phillipsburg, or the Chamber of Commerce, or whoever guidelines it might be, set up a meeting with the commissioners and talk about these issues on their own?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That might be an avenue where you might wanna go ahead and pursue, because the sewer is a big problem.
Well, I mean-
And we have nothing to do with it, they do downstairs.
Well, it's not, you know, I, the issue of the sewer, I, you know, Linda's saying it's on, you know, it's not up in county. That's understood, but the, you know, the difficulty is not the Planning Board, the commissioners, or whatever, it's, you know, we're trying to work with DEQ.
Right.
In the past, you know, we, the town, experienced a lot of input that was very expensive and worthless, basically.
Well, I'm just saying, there might be avenues where, where can we find the monies, where can we find the grants, where can we find a program that is sat- satisfies DEQ and not take-
Well, yeah.
Thousands of dollars out of money from Granite County that we do not really have to go ahead and solve this problem, 'cause it's an ongoing problem. I've been on this board for fourteen, fifteen years, and from long ago, from all these other subdivisions that came through, it's always been the sewer and the water.
I know, it's an antiquated system, but, you know, the town, I think, is making strides for it in the growth policy that, you know, we have, I a grant writer now, and not a grant writer from an engineering firm. You just, that's, and, you know, the council, I think, learned that the hard way. But the policy is, you know, speaking for the council. We're trying to get ahead and doing some of the things in conjunction with, you know, organizations. The ball field that's being fixed up, is the Rotary helping out. And so it's that incorporation of, of others, trying to get people to understand what's going on. And meet this, meet the vision, you know, meet the vision, so.
Yep.
And it's, you know, once approved, if we, somebody wants to come in and says, you know, "I've got this idea for growth for the future, can we put it in the policy"? Yes, you can, you're right.
Yeah, you can open it and take it back through the process and-
That's what I was gonna, then we go through this process again, so, months and months and months.
And while you guys have authority, or don't have authority, you do have influence, right?
Uh, boy, outside of this room, when we walk out of there, I don't think so.
No, that's not the way it works usually.
I just, you know, I mean, we've gone back and forth with commissioners over several different things, but we were very adamant about one issue, and we presented it to them, and they threw it back in our face, and we said, "No, we're still adamant about this issue," and it went back and forth and back and forth. And it's like, we're just advisory committee and volunteers.
They went ahead and did what they wanted anyways.
Well, that's why we have a governance issue in this county right now. And I think that that's one of the things that needs to be, um, addressed.
I mean, I don't like to say it, but, you know, I mean, unless I sit down, and, and I live in Lower Rock Creek, it's, it's sixty-five miles one way from me, it's an hour drive for me to come here to make these meetings, or to go to the commissioners' meeting, or whatever else it might be for Granite County. And if people were more input-minded to say, "Hey, if you make it, we'll make it," and I'd gladly come over. And I'd put my input in front of the commissioners, because I think that they value our commission, our opinions as board members to say, you know, "This is what we're hearing from the people, this is what I've heard one-on-one in our meetings, and, you know, you folks as commissioners need to listen to these people, and you need to come up with some solutions." First, go ahead and state your name, please.
Sure. Um, I'm Pavy Spoon, I'm a twenty-five-year part-time resident of Granite County. Part-time comes more and more as the years go by, um, and I actually have a planning background, I'm really interested in all of this. But, um, I wanted to ask a question, Carl, you said your name is?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, um, you mentioned the capital improvement program, uh, for the water and sewer, is there one? What's the status of it? I think that's kind of one of the-
We-
-critical elements to get anything going.
Yeah, we wanted to get this growth policy through first, then, capital improvement plans, you can check, there are some that are two hundred and fifty pages long. The council is not an advocate of that. It is taken- It is taking, getting again, public input, setting, setting up a committee. This is what we have to do, and then we approve it, and then that capital improvement plan, I believe, goes up the hell of a... And so, you know, if I hear that you'd like to volunteer to come to these planning meetings, we'd be glad to have you.
I, like I said, I'm only a part-time here, but I'd be happy to help where I can.
Yeah.
So...
I hope that answers your question.
But so there's none currently for water and sewer?
The, water and sewer is an ongoing problem that was identified in the capital improvement plan. My suggestion to you is go to the, down to the town council building and ask Reed to see the summation of the plan that's being, that will be reviewed. And it shows you all the projects. Number one was the sewer and water. Number two was Fred Burr and water.
So, Carl, is that part of the growth policy? Is that gonna be entered into the addendum?
Sewer and water should be in here.
I mean, the CIP?
Number two, complete the new sewer system.
And the CIP?
The old CIP is in there.
Okay.
We have to update the CIP in conjunction with the growth policy.
So that's gonna be on here? Okay. So again, this is the growth policy, the addendum, and revising the growth policy, anything else. You know, the planning board just says, "Okay, fine. This is the addendum you wanna put in?" Then they just put it on the side for when it's time to add the addendums and... But again, 2020 with the new census, the whole thing is gonna have to be redone. So there you go.
Yep, 2020, don't redo it.
So this is just temporary.
So, Steve, I mentioned you again. So in a nutshell, the town decided not to do a growth policy, but adopted the county growth policy, correct?
No, the town decided not to do their own separate growth policy, but to have a portion of the policy dedicated to the town within the group document. So they do have their own independent little appendix within the growth policy. It's like almost a neighborhood plan type of thing.
It's an addendum added to it.
So I just, I don't know. Why are we here then?
Because this is the process. This is the process that the state law says you have to do to update your growth policy.
Okay, so according to you all, you have no power or authority, just you're a listening board, basically, an advisory board to the county commissioners. No matter what's written here, the county commissioners could change.
Well, absolutely, they could change, but more importantly, the town council could change it. Because the county is not going to vote on this until the town council does. But yes, you're absolutely correct. The town council could go, they, we could send it to the next step, and the town council could add eighty-five pages. That's their prerogative.
Or nothing.
So you're, you're a recording board. I mean, you're taking, you're compiling this information and writing it in.
Right. Changing information, evaluate it, and pass that information on.
That's an advisory board.
Then you actually, then you actually put a standby and say, "Done. We've got it together. We have voted with a, with a quorum that this needs to be passed on to you."
Well, and we culminate some of those ideas
Yeah.
and put them in a letter associated, excuse me, with the document, sending it down to the town council for recommendation. And that's, I have a question about that for your opinion.
And I would also like to say, this is, we all have a lot to do. And to add these meetings to the end of our day is significant. And so we appreciate the fact that you say thank you, the agreement here, because this does make it effort. Yeah, I just kept screaming in from Bozeman so that I could make it one minute late, and it came straight here. And that just, and this isn't any different from anybody else, that this is what we need to do. On the other hand, I'm sure that Tom did not say to Barbara Sanders, "Do not die until I make the plan, the planning meeting, and then you can do what you want." We've gotta have some compassion, and if we have to have another meeting, I don't know about the other two. I don't know why they weren't here, but, um, but you know what? Dictatorships make decisions in a goddamn hurry. And democracy is slow and it's painful, but we will get it done. We've got a better chance of getting it right. So... So I will be here again next month, if that's what it takes to do it, and we'll be patient, and let's hope we're all alive for it, huh?
Well, just to make a public comment here to Linda to say that, you know, she needs to address to the commissioners about the planning board committee members and those who haven't responded to the meetings, reminding them of the agreement that three months...
Well, we have actually, I mean, this is kind of off-topic from the growth policy, but we do have, the two members that we have that have been chronically not present at this point are up for reappointment
Reappointment.
Yeah, in September, so
Right.
we could ask them to go ahead and re-notice it a few months earlier, whether they will or not, I don't know.
But I, I would like to see that we at least have that noted, that, you know, if the commissioners do feel that there's a need.
And well, and the commissioners usually will come and ask me if I, if they should reappoint so-and-so. And at this point, I would say, no, they haven't made the attendance, you know, that they need to make.
And then it goes through the policy of putting a letter out from the county commissioners saying, "This seat is available representing this part of the county," or the planning board being a volunteer member and whatnot, submitting your information and application, and then they'll go ahead and decide if there's two people, one people, five people. That's what they'll do.
Do any commissioners ever attend to meetings?
No. That's one of those big, who comes if there's a joint meeting? But that's one of those things that the attorneys do not like to see them doing, is having a joint meeting where the board will be acting on something. They could come have, like, for the growth policy, actually, when they were doing Drummond, I believe the town, the county, and the planning board held one joint public hearing so that we didn't have to keep going, I think it was more of a, they didn't wanna keep going back to Drummond. But they did at that time hold one meeting, but then it still had to come back. That was like the gathering of information meeting, and then it still had to come back. The planning board had to hold a public hearing on it. The town of Drummond had to hold a separate public hearing on it. The county had to hold a separate public hearing. That's just the process.
When you complete this report, then do you make a presentation to the commissioners?
Yep. I usually take it down and I will go through the changes with the commissioners after it's been adopted by the town council. And usually they want to know one thing, which is, is this what the town wanted? If it's what the town wanted, they usually just adopt it.
Then do the commissioners and the town councils ever communicate?
Yeah, they do have pretty regular joint meetings.
So, excuse me, Linda, I'm looking at this. It says, uh, resolution adopted by the town council, December sixth, 2011. So this is not even a draft of the new?
This, this is a draft of the new one. That needs to be removed, so...
Okay, so that should be the date, whenever it was adopted by the town council.
Yep, it should, it'll have that date there.
Okay. And then that's it? Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I'll show you.
But just, again, this is a advisory document. This doesn't put zoning into place. This doesn't put any capital improvements in place. It doesn't obligate them to do anything. It's just a goal of where they would like to be within the next five years. So should, even though there's a statement going in that says they would like to consider zoning, that is then, it opens the door for the discussion, but it by no means puts it in place.
Another question.
Uh, Pavy Spoon, I, um, I mean, this document that we have from the town of Phillipsburg, is there a similar document from Drummond?
Yes. It's a little shorter.
Sure, but I didn't think it was shorter.
But yes, there is one.
But there is Drummond.
Hi. The growth policy is online. You can see the whole growth policy.
Okay.
Everything is in it.
Um, Kenny, you opened the discussion, and we talked largely about, a question for everyone present. We've talked about turnout. We've talked a lot about coordination. We've talked about procedure. No one's mentioned anything specific about something they would like to see implemented, other than a smoother policy in having this creation process. Um, is there something more specific that someone would like to mention? Several ideas came out of this meeting last month that we will put forth. Obviously, they can be reiterated briefly, but is there something else that you would like to see? Is there an idea that someone would like to see put forth?
Do I talk now?
No, no, no.
This isn't really yet.
This isn't, no, this is still from Phillipsburg.
Just Phillipsburg.
I mean, we spent half an hour on procedure, and yet we've heard nothing specific about, is there something else, though? I mean, I, I, I think I understand what you're getting at, Ken, about, about people showing up. Our growth policy meetings have been like this for a long time. As part of the problem why we don't have, excuse me, why we don't have ordinances, why we don't have setbacks, some of the things that some of us would like to see.
We have a lot. I mean, the reason I focus on Phillipsburg in these discussions is because I live here, but I've also served on a board that served the whole county. I think that a lot of the issues that affect either Phillipsburg or Drummond are integrated into the issues that affect the whole county. We're a county of, what, thirty-one hundred people year-round residents? Um, and our state is larger than Rhode Island. So we have problems of distance, like he was talking about, coming from Lower Rock Creek to attend these board meetings. But one of the things that I would like to see addressed in more specificity is that for some of the issues that we face, we can't tax our way out of it. We don't have the tax base to do so. We can't raise rates to get out of it. We have to have specific plans in how we're going to raise revenues. I haven't seen anything that addresses how we are going to specifically raise revenues, other than we're gonna look for a grant writer. And we're gonna look for some savior to come in and solve the issues. Now, latest quote that I ever heard on fixing the water and sewer issues in Phillipsburg was about fifteen million dollars, right? That's gonna be a difficult sum to come up with, even in integral fashions. And I think we need to be, as a community, laser-focused on how we're going to raise those revenues to solve these issues. Because we can talk about the ponds all day long, but we haven't done much about them in the whole time that we've owned property here since nineteen ninety-seven. We can talk about how we're going to try to get the water line improved down from Fred Burr to, to Phillipsburg. But we haven't really addressed how we're gonna raise the revenues. And I think that until we do that and until we have a plan, that's a viable plan, of how we can raise those revenues, whether that be through one source, which I think is highly unlikely, or through multiple sources. None of us have an answer to that yet, but we're really not talking about it. And that's what I think we need to focus on. I think we've identified the problems. I don't think we've identified how we're going to pay for them.
In case people don't know, there's gonna be a joint meeting next Wednesday up at Georgetown Lake between the towns and the commissioners. There's your time. The last joint meeting they had, nobody showed up except me. I did record it. It's online. But if you've got something to say, there's a place to say it. For Phillipsburg, for Drummond, for the Georgetown Lake area, say it. As far as my concern about this, not a concern, but I think the whole growth policy should be repealed for the record. Oh, you can have your own. You can have your own. I'm saying the county.
Oh, I can only guess. Any more for you? We'll be at the meeting on the twelfth. Where is the meeting? It's the fire hall at Georgetown Lake. It's on the agenda. If you look at the very bottom of the commissioner's agenda.
They, it was just put up online.
Okay, so is there any more other input, like I say, in regards to the Phillipsburg growth policy part of the Granite County growth policy? Everybody pretty much said their piece?
Um, yeah, we actually are gonna, we, the, the next meeting would have been July fourth. That one, you can't do anyway. I would recommend you move your meeting up by a week. Usually we move it back by a week, but in this case, I would recommend moving it up a week, which would put it in two weeks at the end of June.
Right.
So that you try to accommodate time schedule.
Right.
Is it three mi, yeah, three weeks. Yeah, yeah, three weeks.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Yep.
It's gonna be the last Thursday. So twenty-seventh?
Yes, it'll be the last Thursday.
Twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I feel good about that, buddy.
Yeah.
Shirley, you like that?
I doubt that I can make that, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just one.
Do you have any other comments, Shirley?
And, and I'm
And you can always, Shirley, always...
And I'm good for talking to some of you on your own. I like, I like one-on-one as well.
Talking to Linda or emailing Linda is very important. Because we get that in our minutes, in our notes. And that goes, everybody else...
I'm currently still open, and we'll be for another three weeks at this level.
At this.
Okay, well, thank you.
Anybody else see anything?
Thank you. Appreciate your attending. Appreciate your input. Hopefully, we can get some things resolved and get steaded and started in the right direction. It's gonna be a process, but okay, one step at a time. It's like climbing stairs. You just can't jump up five stairs without taking that first step. Okay.
No, I'll try, I will, I mean, if you three are committing to coming in twenty-seventh, I'll, I'll deal with her. I'm gonna make sure that she can come.
Yep. Okay. Sounds good.
I have a question. Where is that subdivision that Phil McDonald's?
Uh, you know, the, I, I've actually had people call me and say, "Oh, it's, it was canceled. It's actually not canceled." Phil, the, the way the process works for subdivisions is, once they have preliminary plat approval, they have three years to work out any problems that come up within that time of them trying to build it out and get their infrastructure in, things like that. So he essentially, he's on a clock of three years right now, based on when the town council gave him approval, which I think was like the nineteenth of February. So three years from that date, he either has to come in with it completed, which means he would have had to have figured out how to solve the problem with the water and sewer. Or he has to come in with it not completed a hundred percent, but bonded partially. Or he can come in and ask for an extension. Or he will not come in and it will just die.
I probably, yes, I missed the first part of what you said. Who's he?
Uh, Phil McDonald. This is for that subdivision that's out there, so...
Is it up in the field, out here, or not on the, the ranch, or something?
No.
Oh, no, it's right up here behind the hospital.
Oh, oh, here's the hospital.
You know where the power supply is up there?
Yeah, right behind the hospital.
Hospital breaks, so that, surely, Finnsel promises.
So he owns that family?
Yeah.
There's a group of them. It's not just Phillipsburg. It's three or four.
So, yeah, there's several options that still could happen, but for three ye, I mean, he's essentially got three years to, to work on it and try to come up with a plan.
I have one quick question on process. If the subdivision were outside of the town, they, the board makes a decision in regard to your ordinance and covenants, is that correct?
they, the board makes a decision in regard to your ordinance and covenants, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, county-wide.
County, right. So after you go through and look at the proposal, and listen to the, relax with better term, the testimony, you approve the development, then would that go to the commissioners for their approval?
Yeah, they recommend approval, they never actually approve anything. They rec, they make a recommendation of approval or disapproval. They have sent up one for a recommendation of disapproval.
Okay, who makes the decision?
But we. But to clarify something, when we hear the testimony, if you will, about a subdivision, we often, I don't know of any subdivision that we haven't made modifications or recommendations to as a board, and then sent that up, that we, a few we've, we've denied, but the line share we've approved with conditions. And if the, if the subdivision is in agreement with such, and agrees with our program, we send it forward with those modifications. And then they make a decision on it.
If commissioners make a decision. It's a very touchy term, if they make a recommendation, which to me is not approval or disapproval.
No, the planning board makes a recommendation.
So you have authority there.
We massage that.
So you do have some authority outside of the city?
They don't have authority, they have the ability to, to make recommendations on what they, like, we've had, like, we've had a couple where, you know, they've come in saying, well, we want to put four lots here. And it's the person who lives down there says, well, that floods out every year. Okay, well, that kind of information then lets the planning board say, well, no, we're not, we're going to recommend those four lots get taken out and that that area will be left open. And that's what they send forward to the commissioners. But they don't, but the commissioners could say, no, no, we agree, their studies say that it's good, and we're going to leave it. Or they could take the planning board's recommendation. Most of the time on subdivisions, they take the planning board's recommendation.
And to clarify that, that point, I mean, we use, we all come from different parts of the county. We use our own experiences as well as not only subdivision testimony, but comments, testimony from neighbors, concerned citizen, on a matter, condition, spirit of a subdivision, if you will.
Anything else?
Well, thank you guys for volunteering to do this. And to your chronically absent members, I hope that they're soon enough replaced by people who will be as dedicated as you guys.
Well, this, this were all comments, Tom Rue represented Lower Rock Creek before I joined. We didn't even have any from Lower Rock Creek, I still vote.
The problem is the same we have when we try to populate this board, Ken.
Yes, well, you know, the small communities live by volunteerism. And the spirit of volunteerism unfortunately ebbs and flows. And, but that's the reality that we have at this, at this point. And so for people who do volunteer and put in their time to help contribute to the community, I salute you. But in order to make it work, when people make a commitment, they have to live up to their commitment.
Right. Exactly.
Yep, so I guess if you were here only for the Phillipsburg discussion, we'll give you a minute or two to leave before we go on to the next. Yes, you're welcome to stay, but.
If you have any decisions, so what the heck.
Yeah, it's going to be a big meeting about nothing.
To make an ordinance, do they have to come and talk, talk to you about it?
No, no.
Okay. And, and can they make an ordinance that they're going to form an architectural committee, and the architectural committee has to okay a building being downtown? Can they do that without your approval and the commissioner's approval?
Oh, yeah, they can do that, but they have to have, they have to adopt zoning. That would be something where, if you want an architectural board, you've got to have zoning.
But just a single ordinance now, we're not talking about a growth plan or all that stuff.
If you wanted to say, we're going to do an ordinance on docks at large, they can just do that, yeah. They don't come to the county. They are the governing authority for that, for the jurisdiction of the town.
But what they want to make their ordinance restricting what you can build downtown?
They do that.
And they don't have to talk to you about it?
No, they will not.
That's an important point.
But they have to talk to us.
But they still have to talk to the public, Ken.
Yeah, they still have to talk with the public.
They can't just go down.
They have to talk to the public, yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
But they don't have to get your approval or the commissioner's?
No.
That's what I thought. Actually, a town council has more power than the commissioners. They're just an arm of the state of Montana.
Well, and, and that's just, and it's, you know, like when the Georgetown Lake zoning went in, the towns weren't involved, and it was just the county.
Ed, could you? Excuse me, Ed, could you just state your name for the record, please? Just so that I know. Guess that it came from you, and please sign a registration book, please, too, Ed.
Yes, if you can sign in, please sign in before you go.
Read it back, Ken.
Read it back, Ken. Thanks for coming, appreciate it.